Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in the preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 18th, 2023, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you like to take a roll call, please?
Mr. Boyer?
President.
Mr. McTirrenan?
Present.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Mr. Pulaski?
Here.
Mr. Smallwood?
Here.
Ms. Vartan?
Present.
President Pro Tem Hamlet?
Present.
I'd like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed session meeting was, as authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or a council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you're using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we will be approving the minutes for September 3rd, 2024, and September 17th, 2024. Correct?
Need a motion?
I would like a motion for that.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Do we do a roll call vote for that?
No, just in all his favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Any opposed?
Any opposed? Thank you, Rosie.
I'm just going to abstain on the September 3rd.
Okay. Okay. And we will move on to reports. Madam Mayor?
Okay. Couple of announcements. Summit Free Public Library is hosting an open house for new residents on Thursday, October 10th, at 7:00 PM. There will be a short presentation about the library from staff, and then staff will take people on tours of the building and create library cards. City offices are closed next Monday, October 14th. It's also a parking holiday, and no change to trash or recycling collections. Residents can now renew parking and transfer station permits online. Current permits expire on October 31st. Current permit holders will receive an email from Parking Services with instructions on how to renew, and more information is available on the city website. The City of Summit is actively seeking volunteers from the community to serve on several of its boards and commissions. Terms vary from one to five years of service, with an opportunity for reappointment. The city keeps applications active for two years. The deadline to apply is October 25th, 2024. Go to the city website to view a complete list of boards and commissions and to apply now through the online portal. The October Summit Free Market event will be held on Saturday, October 19th, and on Friday, October 25th. The Saturday event for the 12th was actually rescheduled to the 19th due to the Yom Kippur holiday. More information is also available on the city website. This is a friendly reminder, maybe not so friendly, that there should be absolutely no dogs left off-leash at any of our parks or facilities, and dogs are not permitted on turf fields at any time. The number of complaints we are receiving continues to increase, so please be respectful and keep our parks and turf fields clean and safe. And last, the haunted hike, which was slated for this Friday, October 11th, has been rescheduled to Sunday, October 13th, to avoid conflict with the Yom Kippur holiday. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Tucci?
Yes, thank you. First item I have, I would just like to speak to the new Teamsters agreement that you'll be entertaining. For the public's information, I'd just like to, a quick overview on what you're going to be agreeing to if you do. It's a four-year agreement with the Department of Public Works. It'll be for four years. First year will be 2.75%, second year 2.75% cost of living. On the third and fourth year, 2026 and 2027, will be 2.5% for each of those years. There will be steps included in this besides the cost of living. The first two years will be 2% per step. The second two years will be 1% per step. And there will also be reimbursement for those that are in service 25 years and have retired. You'll get a $3,000 per year after 25 years of service with the city. That's just a brief overview of what you'll be entertaining this evening. Secondly, I want to thank DCS Director Schreger for taking me on a town, a city tour. He took me to the Salt Brook, which has been a topic. You know, we're going to jointly look together to see how we can help that homeowner. If you go out there and look at that property, it's scoured pretty severely into their backyard, and that's what we're here for, to try to assist residents, and we're going to try to do that. He also took me out to the paddleboard courts. I know that contract has been out there for a while. As a matter of fact, our CFO had the QPA send another letter to Riley Green, just following up to make sure that they're complying with the apprentice program donation. Also, Director Schreger took me out to Ashland Road. We talked extensively about the sidewalks that were going to potentially be installed there. He showed me a lot of the impediments. You know, there's clear areas, there's clear area with trees, and together we'll try to work something out to see if we can't get that accomplished. Lastly, we got an email from Millennium, who's our grant writer. You're going to have a drive-sover and get-pulled-over application available for the 2024 program that normally runs during the holiday season, and hopefully we're going to put an application in. Normally, I believe the city does and is successful with that. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucci. And I think I'm going to forego my report tonight. I think everything's... Thank you for going to the Salt Brook. I think we're meeting with DEP and our city engineer on the 17th, so we're very excited about that. Thank you for mentioning the paddle courts, Ashland Road, and the grant writer all, and thank you, Mayor, for your report. At this time, I will be calling for nominations for a new council president. I guess I can nominate, Mike, right?
You can nominate.
I would like to nominate our colleague, Mike McTirrenan, to be the next council president for the remainder of the year.
Second.
Who seconded?
Just do...
You can call for any other nominations.
Are there any other nominations? Thank goodness for Rosie.
Okay.
No other nominations?
Hearing none. All those in favor.
Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed.
Congratulations, Mr. President.
Thank you. And thank you, Rosie.
That's the vote on the resolution. Yes.
Thank you, everyone, for your confidence and your support. I really, really appreciate it. I'm a little... I'm honored, but also a little nervous about coming back up here.
Nah.
It's been a few years, so...
It's like riding a bike.
But I do just want to say a couple things. You know, as I mentioned, coming back onto council, I was asked to do this, and I couldn't say no. Similarly, around being council president, it's a tough job. I know Greg's done it. Lisa did a fantastic job. You know, these are hard shoes to fill, and thank you, Councilwoman Hamlet, for filling in as well. She did a tremendous job also. It's... But one of... So I have a couple of things that I'd like to just share on what I'd like to see happen. And one is, from the outside looking in, I'd like to try and reside or preside over meetings that, one, are shorter, but I can't control that. But what I can control is, or at least try to encourage, is a much more civil conversation that we can have together. I get it. First Amendment, we have the right to petition the government. We are the governing body. It's enshrined in our constitution. But I would hope, though, that we also remember that we're neighbors. The people up here, they don't get paid any money. They're all volunteers to help the City of Summit. So when you're directing commentary at them, I just hope you remember that. They're doing it because they love Summit. That's the only reason to do this. And so I just hope that when people do make those comments, they remember that. We can disagree. We will. It's part of being human, but we should do it in a really nice way. So that's one of the big things I'd like to try and have, and I'm going to need everybody's help to do that, obviously, not just the people up here, but the people out there and watching. The second thing I'd like to try and do is just to help with how our council, I guess, interacts with city staff, some ideas about making process a little more smooth. They're not new, they're old, but sometimes they work. And we have great staff in the city, and we want to support them and we want to work well with them and let them do their job, because when they do, great things happen. So that's another thing. And then, thirdly, I get it, my... Yeah. My background was finance. I'm a teacher now, but I did have a finance background. You know, the reason I ran for council 12 years ago, maybe, was because I cared about the budget, I cared about affordability in town, and I still care about that. I have way too many friends who are leaving because it's expensive. New Jersey's expensive. So what we can do around keeping Summit affordable to a town that we can continue not only to raise our kids, but then retire here, would be the goal. So that's another thing I'd like to do. So with that, we're going to kick off the meeting. Oh, one thing I will say. I'm going to get it out of the way right now. If you notice on the agenda pack, we are going to do public comments. We're going to leave them at the end of the meeting. Okay? I've thought long and hard about this. Over the last several years, people have done it both ways. I feel I really need, I want to do it that way for, not because I want to make it more difficult for people to make comments. There's loads, but there's loads of ways for the citizens of Summit to reach out to council. You can come to meetings, you can speak, you can send emails, you can go... I went out for coffee with four different people in the last week. There's lots of ways that you can interact with council. However, our staff has to be here for meetings, and they have to be here until the end of business is done, because we rely on our staff as experts. If we're asked questions and we have to think about the city's business, they're the subject matter experts. And it's not fair, in my opinion, for our staff to have to sit here till 11 o'clock at night to finish city business. A lot of them don't live around the corner. They have long drives. So if you... So I get it, some people are going to say, "I wish it was at the beginning, it's not fair, you're stifling open conversation." That's not why we're doing, I'm doing this. It's for our staff. And I hope people understand that they have lives, too, and I want to just make sure that their lives are a little easier rather than having to stay here till 11:30 with us. So with that, we're going to start a meeting, right?
Let's do it.
Okay. If you go through the agenda, one thing we are going to do...
Capital projects.
Capital projects. It's Capital Projects 11543, the authorized bid for advertising Parkline project. We're going to pull that for now. We're still working on some legal issues. That will return hopefully next month. Okay. All right. So let's get going. All right. We did reports.
Mayor's proclamation.
All right.
I'm going to go ahead.
Thank you. So we're going to have a mayor proclamation. Madam Mayor is going to make a nice proclamation on Fire Prevention Week. Thank you.
There we go. Whereas the City of Summit is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our state, and whereas fires are a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 360,000 home fires, and whereas roughly three out of five fire deaths occur in homes with either no smoke alarm or with no working smoke alarms, and whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely, and whereas Summit residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home, and make sure their smoke alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities, and whereas Summit residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas the Summit Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the number of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas Summit residents are responsive to these public education measures and are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, and whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme is "Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You" serves to remind us the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth Fagan, Mayor of Summit, do hereby proclaim the week of October 6th to 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and I urge all the people of Summit to make sure their homes have working smoke alarms and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of our Summit Fire Department. In witness whereof, I have here on two set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this eighth day of October in the year 2024. And I just want to say thank you. We have an incredible fire department. I think we're very, very fortunate to have all these guys. Thank you for coming tonight and...
All right. So just a few, just a few words. Mayor actually pretty much said a lot of what I was hoping to go with, so this will actually even be shorter than expected. Just some points. NFPA, that's the National Fire Protection Agency, say that having working smoke alarms reduces the risk of dying in a home by 54%. So real important to, if you don't have them, to please install them. As you said, install smoke alarms in each bedroom, outside each sleeping area and every level, including the basement. Smoke alarms should be installed about 10 feet from any cooking appliances to minimize false alarms. And for best protection, interconnect all smoke alarms via electric... You could do electric hardwiring, or they have the wireless option. Make sure you test the smoke detectors once a month to using the test button, and make sure everyone in the home understands the sound. And yeah, for more information, you can reach out www.nfpa.org/events, excuse me, backslash Fire Prevention Week for additional tips. That's... Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for that proclamation. I love this, the historical minute, it's back.
Yeah, I'm doing it again. I'm doing it again tonight.
So Councilman Pulaski?
Yeah, hopefully we'll have some students starting at the next meeting. Rosie's going to pull up a painting there.
Oh, not there. What happened? There we go. I can't seem to expand this one.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody recognize this painting?
Oh, yes.
Yes. It's "Washington Crossing the Delaware" by famed American historical and portrait painter Emmanuel Luitze. In 1849, a 29-year-old artist from Cincinnati went to Europe to further his training. He studied German landscapes at the Academy in Dusseldorf, Germany, became acquainted with Luitze. At the time, Luitze was working on his iconic painting, and the German models just weren't quite right. Luitze seized upon the American student and had him posed twice, once as George Washington and once as the steersman with the oar in the stern. That American artist, Luitze's model, was Worthington Wittrich. Wittrich became a famed artist in his own right, as a member of the so-called Hudson River School, a group of landscape painters whose aesthetic vision was influenced by Romanticism. Worthington moved to, Worthington Wittrich moved to Summit in 1880 and built an impressive Victorian home he called Hillcrest, then located at 166 Summit Avenue. The Wittrich Gardens and Worthington Court Apartments now stand on the spot perpendicular to Wittrich Road. He lived the last 30 of his 90 years in the Hill City. You can find his paintings in the American Wing at the Metropolitan Museum of Art in New York and in the Washington National Gallery. So the model for George Washington in this painting lived in Summit for 30 years.
All right. That's...
Nice, very nice.
Learn something new every day. That's good. Thank you, Councilman Pulaski. All right. At this time, we have a presentation for this evening. Tonight, we are honored, or we have the pleasure of hearing Mike Malloy, Senior Manager of Operations from New Jersey American Water, and he's going to give us an update.
Good evening. Thanks a lot for the opportunity to come meet with you today. I'll give you a brief update on our operations in the city. We only have 11 slides, and I'm going to try to keep it concise.
Just give me a high sign, we won't want you to change.
Absolutely. So just a little bit about our company, we're the largest water utility in the state. We've served the city for over 100 years, over 800 employees strong. The majority of our business is in water, although we have a growing wastewater business as well. Locally, we serve Long Hill Township as well as parts of Bedminster and Berners Township as well. Next slide, please. So part of our strategy to operating the systems that we own is proactive management. So we're out flushing hydrants, we're out flushing blowoffs on dead ends in an effort to make sure that those hydrants are operational, water's kept fresh. Likewise, we're out inspecting valves on a regular basis to make sure that in the unfortunate event that we have a water main break, that those valves operate and we can isolate the shutdown to be as small of an area as possible. We have a robust geographic information system that we keep updated in terms of locations of our assets, so that if there's need for engineering support, we can locate those. Likewise, every day, we have proactive leak detection technicians out in the field who look for assets that may be leaking or may potentially need renewal. Next slide. So we're making significant investments in the system, including in the city here. Over the past few years, we've invested a large sum of money mainly in main renewal. Some of our assets, particularly in older sections of our system, some of them are in much needed replacement, and we've been proactive in terms of replacing those prior to any kind of failure. Next slide. This is depiction in terms of the miles of main that we've been replacing. We've replaced quite a bit in Summit. I have a slide later on that will show some of our targeted investments. Next slide. So it's a little bit difficult to make out all the details here, but this is a depiction of the investments we've made in the city since the year 2020. We've spent over $7 million. Probably the largest and most high-profile investment that we made was on Mars Avenue. It was a large project for us. Mars Avenue is a very congested thoroughfare, both from a traffic standpoint and an underground standpoint as well. We had to remove some trolley car tracks in order to install a water main, gives you an idea about how old the infrastructure is out there. But in the years ahead, in terms of the investments we plan on making, it's going to be targeted on letting galvanized service line replacement. The state passed a law requiring that all letting galvanized service lines be replaced, both company-owned side and customer-owned side, before 2031. We're seeking to make that investment targeted and try to link it up with paving programs, both the city's paving schedule, the county's paving schedule, and any kind of work that other utilities are engaged in. Next slide, please. In terms of customer service, we're available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The water's always on, so if there are issues round the clock, we always encourage our customers to call the 800 number. It's a recorded line. It's the quickest way to dispatch assistance to get customers' help. For those who aren't necessarily interested in using the phone, some of the younger generation likes to hop on text messages or the website in order to notify us, that's always an option as well. And we have a lot of options online on our website to be able to manage your account if you so desire. Next slide. Bless you. On our website, we have alerts in terms of service disruptions, whether it's water main flushing, whether it's construction projects, whether it's water main break. If we do have a service issue, we're out there usually sending a proactive text, email alert, and sometimes a phone call to impacted customers. Obviously, we have to, we have to measure that. If there's a water main break at 10:30 at night and everybody's asleep and it's going to be replaced by 3 o'clock in the morning, we're probably not going to send something out. But if it's during daytime or people's lives are impacted, we're going to try to send something out to keep them in the loop. Next slide. Likewise, we have a customer advisory map where customers go online and see where we're working, what the emergency is. We keep it updated in terms of the replacement timeline as well as the restoration service. We always have police out on our job sites as well to help direct traffic and to handle any, any customer inquiries in terms of trying to navigate through the work zone. Likewise, we have an opportunity to submit emergencies online in addition to calling our call center. Next slide. We understand that water is probably the smallest utility bill that most customers pay, but we understand that at times, times are tough, and we do have options for payment arrangements, budget billing, similar to what the electrical utilities have traditionally offered. There's also grant assistance for customers who meet certain income guidelines, and that's administered by a third party. It's not a situation where you're sharing that information with the water company. It's a third party that handles that for us. Next slide. That's it. Promised a short presentation. I welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. This time, council, any questions?
Sure.
Please, Councilman Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. So you mentioned before 20, talking about lead.
Yes.
You talked about replacement of the lines before 2031. So if the service side is not lead, but the customer side is, the two questions are, how can residents find out which, what, which one they have? And two, how would, how does that replacement work and what's the expected timeline?
Sure. So we do have a map on our website that shows the known company-owned side service line material, and then there is a depiction of what the customer-owned side service line material as well. We have very good records as to what's on the company-owned side. We usually have pretty poor records on what's the customer-owned side. Houses change hands, sometimes during the sale. It's a requirement that the new buyer demands that the old buyer perhaps replaces a letter galvanized service line. What we anticipate in the next couple months is we're going to be engaging the services of a consulting engineering firm... of a consulting engineering firm who's gonna go door-to-door in the city in coordination with the city government. We're gonna meet, we're gonna keep the police department in the loop, we're gonna communicate to customers so that they're not alarmed by somebody knocking on the door asking them to go into their basement and look at their water service line. But that's gonna be part of our effort to inventory what the service line material types are out there. And then, once we have that information, we're gonna link up with city engineer, the county, and we're gonna make an effort to go out there and dig test holes where perhaps it's unknown what the company side is, which is a very small amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions?
I don't really have a, thank you, Council President. It's more of a comment than it is a question, but, well, actually, it's both. You'd already answered it in your presentation about coordinating with Director Schreger regarding pavement. One of the biggest complaints and questions we have from residents, or that at least I hear from, is why are we digging up a road that we just paved three weeks ago? So, biggest thing is just how, before we dig up any road, just how, do you coordinate with Dr. Schreger as well as the other utilities to find out if they're gonna be needed, needed to work in that area as well?
We do. We, we enjoy an excellent relationship with Department of Community Services here. They've been excellent in terms of keeping us updated proactively in terms of the streets that the city plans on paving. Once we have that list, we go through an inventory of our own assets and see what's due for replacement, in particular with this letting galvanized service line replacement effort. We're getting out ahead of that paving, so we understand how frustrating it is for the city to pave and then for us to come two years later and rip up the road and ruin that brand-new paving. So, we try to get ahead of that.
Any other comments or questions?
One question. Your consumer confidence report that you send out, do you get any, or do you get a lot of resident feedback from those when you send them out?
I don't. We have a water quality group that handles all of our lab testing, and from time to time, they do get questions.
I'm sure people are concerned about what's in their water, right?
People always have questions. We have, we're pretty proud of our, our track record in terms of keeping customers informed and the quality of the water we deliver. We're the only utility that delivers a product that customers ingest, so we take that responsibility very seriously. Of course.
Other comments or questions? One thing I would just say, I know you guys do a good job, but one of the things we do hear a lot from residents is, how did I not know that there was work on this road and we've got traffic? So, to the extent, we can always make sure we're being sharp, that we're, when you guys are doing work, even if there's an emergency, like a water main break or whatever, we, I do see pixels on, I know you guys communicate, but just please make sure that that continues, because residents do care. It disrupts their day. It can be difficult, they're always busy, so anything you can do to give more information is better.
Absolutely. We'll continue that, we'll do.
All right, no other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time, really appreciate it.
All right, we're gonna move into the business part of our meeting now, and we have one ordinance for hearing today. Councilman Miniger.
May I read the title first?
Oh, you, of course you may.
Thank you. Ordinance number 24-3325, an ordinance amending the code Chapter A Schedule of Fees Appendix and Chapter 4 General Licensing Section 4-3 Automatic or Electronic Amusement Games.
Ah, now, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance that will amend Chapter A Schedule of Fees and Appendix and a subsection 4-3-4 under Chapter 4 that deals with the fees associated with licenses for automatic or electronic amusement games, such as pinball, video games, and other arcade amusement games. This ordinance will change the fee for obtaining a one-year license to operate those types of games in a business to simply $250 per machine. This is a change from a license fee that currently varies based on the number of machines you operate, ranging from $140 to $695. The $250 fee brings us in line with nearby cities such as Morristown, Westfield, and Chatham. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
Thank you.
We need a second.
Second?
Second, I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, I ask any comments from the public on this ordinance? Okay, seeing none. Any comments from counsel? I guess, I know I asked this in, at Safety Committee, Councilman Miniger, but just as an aside, are there, is there a proposal that we know of for these types of machines or a business to go into town?
Not that I know of. In a business, there was a suggestion by a resident who said that to bring it back in line with the surrounding city, we should do that, so we agreed.
Excellent, thank you.
If I, if I may to add on to that, there was a, a business owner in town who was requesting to install an amusement game, and the fee was the question, and he brought it forth as a suggestion, and it went through DAR process, and that's what resulted in the ordinance.
Thank you, excellent. Any other comments from counsel? All right, I'm gonna declare the hearing closed, and we're moving on to ordinances for final considerations.
Thank you. Ordinance 24-3325, an ordinance amending the code Chapter A Schedule of Fees Appendix and Chapter 4 General Licensing Section 4-3 Automatic or Electronic Amusement Games, subsection 4-3.4 Issuance of License in Term.
Thank you. Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. Having just had the hearing on this ordinance minutes ago, I move this ordinance for final consideration.
I have a second.
All right, we've roll call, right? Okay, what, take a roll call?
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. McTernan?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
Did I miss anyone? This roll call card's a little off. Okay.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, moving along to resolutions now. We're gonna start with safety and health. Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President, and congratulations.
Thank you.
This is Resolution ID number 11481. This resolution requests authorization for the purchase and installation of fixed cameras with an automated license plate recognition, ALPRs, a system to complete our geofence around the borders of the city of Summit. Phase one of this project was completed at the end of 2023, and this installation will finalize the city's security infrastructure. As you may or may not know, completion of the geofence enhances security. There will be no monitoring gaps, improved collaboration with other towns, and it leads to a safer community. So, I enthusiastically, I'm happy to, to move this to, to move this forward.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second? All right, any, on this resolution, are there any comments from the public? Any comments from counsel? I would just make one comment. I won't comment on everything, but I just saw this, and as I'm getting up to speed, I just love that we're doing this and continue to look for different ways to use technology to make our community safer. You know, one of the things I've heard, people and being on the outside looking in, is safety is obviously such a big deal, and I know the environment we live in, the community, the state we live in, the surrounding communities, you know, crime is, it's, it's an issue in a lot of places, but it doesn't mean we have to accept it. We should push back to what we can and what we can do here, and I'm very, very happy to support this resolution. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to safety number two.
Thank you again, Council President. This is ID number 11555, amend the mayor's task force on homelessness in Summit, add new membership category, and appoint new members. I'd like to defer this to the mayor for a little more context. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the task force has been meeting since June, and as a result of several meetings, one of the things that has come to light is that the partnership between Overlook Emergency Department and our service providers, including our police force, our emergency, our EMTs, and, and Grace, and, and Bridges, and all of the providers that are engaged in this conversation, it has come to light that we could use somebody that's connected more directly with the emergency department to help us facilitate care and access to services once folks have visited the ER and are being discharged to the community. So, this is an effort to, to sort of ensure that that link is more, is a little bit stronger. So, the, the title of the additional person for the task force is the Chief Nursing Officer or designee, and in this case, I'm happy to appoint Jennifer Moran, who is currently the nursing manager in the emergency department, and she's, she's fantastic, and she's gonna be a great asset for us. And then, secondly, we had a resident who was on the task force who stepped down. We hadn't filled that role yet, and with Lisa Allen stepping down as council president but being available still in Summit, and with her role as part of the task force already in the last several months, it felt like a great opportunity to rope her back in for a little bit extra, and so she's gonna be joining the task force as well.
Thank you, Mayor Fagan. That being said, I'd like to move this resolution for adoption.
Second. Thank you. At this time, are there any comments from the public? All right, comments from counsel? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now, moving right along to law and labor. Councilman Palowski.
Thank you. This is Resolution ID number 11461, to authorize execution of an agreement with Teamster Local Periodically, the city of Summit negotiates its contract with the Teamsters Union, which includes our Department of Public Works. It's a collectively bargained agreement with a four-year term. Business Administrator Tucci gave some additional details earlier in the meeting. Per our closed-session discussion, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Any comments from the public? Comments from counsel? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Law and Labor number two, Councilman Palowski.
Thank you. This is Resolution ID number 11529, to authorize shared services agreement with the Summit Board of Education for the use of Tatlock Fieldhouse. The authorization is subject to final revisions and the approval of the Board of Ed, Council, and our city solicitor. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Law and Labor number three, Councilman Palowski.
This is Resolution ID number 11548, to declare vacancy in the city administrator position. Per our closed-session discussion, we're declaring a vacancy for the role of city administrator effective January 1st, 2025. We'll be advertising for the position and starting the interview process in the near future. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Comments from coun, or, comments from the public? Any comments from counsel?
Yes, to the Council President.
Please.
There was a, in the past, there was a, there was a document that was posted online, or at least a part on the website, that talked about the search process and how that was gonna happen. I know that there is a search process that is, was just revealed to us today. I would like to be more clear about that search process. I would love the public to see more about how that's gonna work. Is there a way that we can get that up there, on the website for the public to see?
I think that's very doable, and I think we could accomplish that.
Yeah, it's gonna be a multi-step process, resumes, interviews.
Leclerc and I will formulate something.
Okay, great. I think it's great that the public knows how this is happening. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving right along to community programs and parking services. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID number 11546, authorizing a promotion within parking services from parking clerk to administrative assistant and parking attendant to staff assistant. I move to authorize this resolution.
And I second.
Any comments from the public? Comments from counsel?
I do, I just have a comment.
Please.
I just like the fact that we have some really great staff in parking services, and our parking director felt very comfortable in promoting staff from, from within.
Very good point. Other comments from counsel? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Capital Projects and Community Services, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Yes, so we were pushing the park line, which was 11543. The next resolution is 11487, which is authorizing the bid advertisement of maybe playground improvements. This resolution authorizes and directs to advertise for bids for the maybe playground improvements project, with said bids to be advertised in a Union County local source on Thursday, October 17th, and received by the purchasing agent on Tuesday, November 19th, 2024, in the council chambers. The engineering division has overseen the preparation of the bid specifications for the maybe playground project. Plans and specifications are being finalized and are ready for public bidding. This long-awaited and much-needed project will replace the entire maybe playground located within the city's Village Green. The project will include the removal of the existing playground and pertinent site work, installation of a new playground that is fully ADA compliant, shade structures, drainage, and landscape improvements. This has been posted online and shared with the community at various events over the last few years, and has been well-received by the public. I would like to move this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from counsel?
I have one. I'd just like to say that I think for at least Andy and Greg and I, we were probably the ones that worked on this initially, and thank you to Mark and David for all your hard work on this. It's been a ton of work. It's gonna be a great project, and I think that right now, what you're seeing going on in the Village Green is the Village Transit Improvement Project. So, the first thing that we had to do was sort of reconfigure all of those sidewalks and all that lighting, which ultimately sort of decreased the price on this project. So, although it took a little bit longer to get maybe playground approved, the, the end result is that we did get it at a, at a less expensive option. You'll see the Village Green being ripped apart right now, but, so, took a little step back to make a few steps forward, and we're really excited. So, thank you to all the city staff for working on that.
Other comments?
Yes, I'd like to echo Councilwoman Hamlet's comments to thank Mark and David for their, their hard work. It's, it's come a long way since our meetings with the neighborhood in, I believe it was May, late April. I know Councilman Miniger is very proud of this, you know, because he's been working on this for quite a while, about this being the very first fully ADA-accessible playground in Summit, so it was something that we should all be very proud of.
Good comment. Councilman Vartan?
Just a couple of quick things. Thank you, Council President. So, there's ADA compliance, and then there's fully accessible, which is what this playground's gonna be, right? Which is a different, higher standard, which I think is a great thing for our most centrally-located of, of playgrounds. And then the second, well, also just to add my thanks to you guys. My third thing is, I guess I'll add one final plug to bring back that wooden train from when I was a kid, that was a very cool thing to have there, but anyway. That's it for me. Thank you.
Nostalgia. Any other comments from counsel? All right, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving right along, number three.
This is 11539, which, execution of agreement with Our House Foundation, pending closed session tonight. This resolution, to put in summary, Our House owns and operates a four-bedroom group home located at 1 Greenfield Avenue in the city of Summit. Our House is a qualified group home operator and owns six supportive and special needs condominium units and group homes within the city. The city has proposed a per-bedroom subsidy in exchange for the recording of a 30-year deed restriction on the premise, which would render the group home credit-worthy under the New Jersey Fair Housing Act. In addition to the per-bedroom unit subsidy, the city and Our House desire to provide an additional group home within the city of Summit, because housing for individuals with special needs is
with special needs is limited throughout the state, and more housing is needed to serve the specific population of very low-income New Jersey residents. With that, with that, I make a motion to approve the agreement with Our House.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Comments from council?
I have one.
Councilwoman Hamlet?
I would say that we've been kicking this one around for the last couple of years, so it's nice to finally see this come to, come to fruition. We're hopeful that we can partner with Our House for another group home in the near future, and so I think we're all excited to start this relationship back and, and provide, provide this opportunity.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman Smallwood.
And I'd also like to just reiterate the fact that this is a partnership that we're able to utilize to help satisfy some of our affordable housing obligations for this year, so.
Yeah, it's a good thing. Other comments? Yeah, I would just add, you know, this is a, a part of our community that I know I have relatives who need housing and these things, and it's very, very difficult. There's a real, real shortage in New Jersey to accommodate people with special needs. So I think it's awesome that the city's been able to partner. Our House has been a partner in many projects in the city, so it's nice to see them come back, and hopefully this can continue. And it does move the gulp of the ball down the field for our obligations, so it's, I think it's a win-win-win for everybody. So, very happy to support this resolution. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Capital Projects, number four, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is 11535. Appointing zoning officer that, per the recommendation of the Director of the Department of Community Services, Roger Dornbeer, is hereby appointed to the position of zoning officer effective October 7th, 2024. I would like to move this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet?
I'm just very excited to have everybody meet Roger. I think we, obviously, we lost Krista Anderson for retirement, geez, maybe six months ago, I can't remember now, but it's been over a few months, and Greg and I, Councilman Vartan and I, along with the Human Resources Manager, sat in Director Schreger with a lot of interviews, and, and this was hands-down one of the best candidates. So the City of Summit is very, very lucky. He eats, lives, and breathes, I think, zoning, so we are just super excited, and I think Greg and I both walked out of that meeting very, very, very humbled and excited for the future of Summit.
Great. Any other comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Capital Projects, number five, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. Is it okay if I bundle these two?
You're my guest.
Great. So I'm going to bundle 11542 and 11536. These resolutions, first, declare the vacancy Department of Community Services for the Assistant Zoning Officer, that was pending closed session, and appoint the Assistant Zoning Officer, per the recommendation of the Director of Department of Community Services, Chris Nicola, who is hereby appointed to the Assistant Zoning Officer effective September 23rd, 2024. I'd like to move these two resolutions.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council?
This is the last time you'll have to hear from me.
Please.
But these are really exciting, and everybody should be excited. We've been hearing about vacancies in City of Summit. The reason why this is really important, Chris Nicola has been working in our zoning department for quite some time, so this is an internal promotion for him, and we are just over the moon. He's a wonderful gentleman. He also lives, eats, and breathes zoning, so I think it's going to be a really unique partnership with him and Roger at the helm there, obviously under Director Schreger's leadership, but we couldn't be more proud of Chris for getting into this role, and we're, we're excited to see the partnership there. So, thank you.
Other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Ooh, second. Comments on consent agenda from the public? Seeing none. Council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so at this time, city staff, adieu. Enjoy your evening. Okay? And now we're moving along to public comments. Madam Clerk, do you want to reiterate the rules for public comments?
Sure. At this point in the meeting, council welcomes comments from any member of the public about issues that are not topics on tonight's business agenda. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please provide a copy to the city clerk at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. And to help facilitate an orderly meeting and to prevent all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Thank you.
All right, if you have a comment, please approach the podium, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Fisher Mike Kieran, and I am homeless. I don't have an address. And just real quick, I come, and I made real brief notes, and I know I'm under a time that I won't hold you up, I promise, but I don't have any rhetorical prowess or any, you know, good art, good with articulation. But I've come to speak to you all tonight about a very simplistic matter, though unfortunately, I wouldn't be here tonight if this principle was universally understood by the council members of this township. And it basically involves human and civil rights. And, you know, the apparent disparities that I find when the response you get is directly reflective of your socio or economic situation. If one of you council members were, God forbid, you know, you know, a victim of random violence, I'm sure you would go up and pick up that red phone and call it, and I'm sure the chief would come out right away to speak to you. When you're a homeless person, you do that? I was physically assaulted by an EMT worker. I came in here the same day with video. And do that, and I sit there, answer the phone, nobody's there, 45 minutes, 50 minutes? Do I have to come in bleeding? But that's not what I all came to talk about. But I'm so glad, Councilmen, that you said before with your motion that you were saying, you know, we want to keep this community safe, and we have to kick up. I wouldn't be before you tonight if I wasn't kicking up and speaking on behalf of the disenfranchised. All right, real quick, and I will just keep this as, as brief as I possibly can. You know, it's, 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 it's always when it's dealing with the unhoused population. Like if Eli Manning came in here and got assaulted, I'm sure he would be taken care of like that. You know what I'm saying? Do you guys find that strange? Or do you find that there's some kind of bad opinion upon unhoused individuals, or however you like to classify them? And, you know, it's that, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to make 100% true statement to you, you know, Ms. Mayor, and any one of the council members, you know, but, you know, it's just, it's, it's a deplorable condition, but could you imagine that if that happened to you, how you would feel? Like, how would you feel? You feel like you wouldn't, you weren't counted. You feel like you wouldn't count. And that's a problem. That's really a problem. And, you know, would, would you be apprehensive to report it? Like, I'm almost apprehensive to report it, because I know I'm not going to get the same services and responses as a normal citizen of Summit, because I'm unhoused. I guess that's all the time I'm going to get.
Fisher, thank you for your comments, and thank you for having the courage to come and tell your story.
I only got to tell half of it. Well, council members, Ms. Mayor, Delia, Councilmember Jamil, thank you so much for your time. You all have a good night. Stay home. Thank you. 20 seconds is not enough. I need 180. Good night, gentlemen.
Good night. Do we have any other public comments?
Hi, I'm Foster Osborne, 66 Pine Grove Avenue. I want to discuss the shade tree ordinance and the shade tree committee. First, let me congratulate the council on passing the new shade tree ordinance. This action was a big improvement over the prior ordinance. On May 7th, 2024, a tree contractor began removing a tree on my neighbor's lot at 70 Pine Grove. I suspected that they did not have a permit, and I called the police, who arrived promptly and said that the tree ordinance was above his pay grade. I asked if someone from DCS might come out, and he also arrived quickly. He said that the matter was also above his pay grade, but he would call the city forester. This was a Tuesday, and the city forester only works on Thursday. The forester was reached by phone, who said that the contractor did not have a permit. Work was stopped, and the contractor left. I was concerned about the enforcement of the ordinance and asked Mr. Kilby, Chair of the Shade Tree Committee, if he might, if I might attend the next meeting. He graciously agreed, and I asked if I might invite the policeman who had come to my property as a paid guest. Mr. Kilby said no. At the meeting, I began my report, and a committee member asked about the police. I started to say that Mr. Kilby did not want the policeman to come to the meeting, at which point Kilby interrupted me in mid-sentence and ended my report. I was upset by Kilby's brusque action and sent him an email saying that I felt he backstabbed me. Kilby responded that he thought I was mentally ill, and he would no longer correspond with me further. I felt my rights had been challenged and hired a lawyer to assist me at the next shade tree meeting. My lawyer requested some Oprah paperwork from the city regarding prior tree removal applications. We learned that no past violator was ever fined for tree removal on private land. Why have an ordinance which is not enforceable, nor where violators, violators are not penalized? When I brought up this subject at the meeting, Mr. Kilby, Kilby cut me off and said that he would not discuss this matter. I was dumbfounded. Later, after the meeting, my lawyer advised me my last recourse was to go to the council meeting with my complaint. In summary, in regards to private property, the tree ordinance is not enforceable. Violators are not fined. Mr. Kilby is unqualified to be the Chair of a city committee. He was rude to me to say that I was mentally ill. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
If I may have a statement?
Oh, if you have a written statement, please, can you give it to the madam clerk? She'll record it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Other public comments?
Good evening. Adriana Alarcon, Springfield Avenue, A-L-A-R-C-O-N. Proud Summit resident for 13 years. I want to first acknowledge the significant losses by the, those loss in the southern states. For over a decade, I've had indoor watching my hard-earned property erode away, many other properties erode away along Salt Brook. Finally, we have hope. This administration has pushed forward, getting this situation addressed through a meeting with the Senator, the DEP, and the county. Thank you, Mayor, very much, council members, Boyer, Hamlet, and prior to her departure, Allen. I can't stress how grateful I am towards this administration for action being taken, and I eagerly look forward to the repair and restoration of this dream. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other public comments?
I'm Diego Huaynargal Cort. I had a very insightful conversation with Lisa Allen last week after the Summit Police Department coffee. We were talking about how to bring healing to the city. And halfway through the conversation, we noted that stability may not be exactly what we have to strive for. After all, we can't move our city forward by burying differences of opinion to make nice, while essentially saying, bless your heart. There is a big difference between facts and interpretation or opinion, and one of the scourges of our age is the idea of alternative facts. An incontrovertible fact, for example, is that the Summit total municipal tax levy is $146 million. This is good or bad for Summit? Well, that's open for discussion. In our democratic system, we should strive to establish the facts before we debate our implications. Let me give you an example using the closure of Maple Street. Last year, during the May 2nd, 2023 council meeting, our city solicitor explained that a temporary closure of Maple Street is legal under Title 4067, 16.9, and 16.10. Further, it is under Title 40 that Milburn had outdoor fund this past summer. Our solicitor pointed out that there's an alternative process under Title 39, considerably more arduous, but also legal. So it would seem that closing Maple Street for summer dining season is legal. Stating so is, stating that it isn't so, it would be incorrect. What the law doesn't say is whether closing down Maple Street is right or wrong for Summit. That's where differences of opinion that should be debated arise. The example in Milburn is powerful for another reason. Rather than getting bogged down in the legality of closing any street, the debate focused on which street it made the most sense to close, because their leaders agreed on the foundational fact that closing a street is legal. I support a season closure of Maple Street because I enjoy the ambience created by people hanging out outdoors, dining and listening to music in an environment that is safe for our kids. I am willing to put up with the inconvenience, especially when kids are out of school, and I support a vibrant downtown, and I keep hearing that business has suffered over the last few years without the closure. That said, I respect the opinion of those who disagree. What Summit has been missing all this time is for neighbors to present the merits of both sides of the argument and then have a vote. When that happens, maybe we close Maple, maybe not. Maybe we close another street. Those are all plausible outcomes. What we cannot endure is the never-ending bitterness and division that is caused by their respectfully providing alternative facts about issues like Maple Street. True leadership brings people together, rather than allowing the division caused by half-truth and alternative facts. We're hilltoppers. We can do better. We must do better. It's the only way to begin healing our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Claire Toth at 11 Sunset Drive. I had originally prepared these remarks for the Resolution 11543, but I think they still make sense on their own. So, the park line was partly inspired by the High Line in Manhattan, and what makes the High Line wonderful is the variety of plantings, of different outdoor rooms along its length, of ways it screened from nearby residences. The path is not a straight line. It invites engagement. All that makes a welcome and inviting way to move along the west side of Manhattan. And the proposed Phase 3 of the Park Line is none of that. Rendering show a straight path, a humdrum continuous wall, and a row of arbiviti. One Henry Street resident described this as looking like a tunnel, and it does. Nothing interests the pedestrian. This is not a place to linger and enjoy the outdoors. It's a passageway to get through quickly. Neighbors are correct to worry that if the Park Line does not engage its users, it will instead encourage less-than-desirable behavior. So let's go back and get a solid landscape design for this phase of the Park Line, one with features that make it desirable. Council has the time. We know the city doesn't yet have the necessary easement to install the proposed steps at Russell Place. It's been several years since council has really focused hard on the Park Line, so let's take the extra few weeks, really engage the residents, and design something that works for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire, was that a prepared statement you wanted?
She emailed.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Perfect. You just got it figured out. Efficient. Please.
My name is Alan Dickey. I live on Canoe Brook Parkway. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before council tonight. I'm going to voice a concern and a suggestion to a solution for the, in the interest of bipartisanship. My wife, Mary, and I have lived in Summit for over 40 years. We've raised three children here who attended public schools, played sports, and benefited from the diverse, friendly, and inclusive Summit community. Our children now are healthy and happy adults, and we have three grandchildren. Their success was in due, in part, to how wonderful a place Summit was for them as they were growing up. Under the slogan Together for Summit, Republicans took control of city council this year. As a Democrat, I was not happy about that, since I believe the Democrat, Democratic candidates were better qualified, and the previous council acted in the best interest of Summit under trying, certainly. under trying circumstances. But that slogan seemed to me to promise the continuation of traditional Summit bipartisanship. Recently, I learned that several long-serving senior administrators have left Summit city government. My concern is how these administrators will be replaced. How can we be assured that qualified, professional, experienced people will be hired to continue the nonpartisan fairness of city government? I've heard that there will be a bipartisan search committee appointed to evaluate and recommend applicants for the open positions. If that is the case, great. I support that. If council chooses a partisan way to fill those spots, I will continue, conclude that Together for Summit is just politics as usual. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, and Mark Gunderson, Brook Court, here in Summit. I just wanted to come and speak briefly about the Park Line project as well. I saw that it was not discussed this evening. It seems like there's a, you know, a few more weeks before it comes back, and I think that's a good thing. I commend council for that. I've actually spoken to a number of residents on Henry Street, as well as Ashwood Court, a little bit of Ashwood Avenue as well, as everybody knows. And I think it's a valuable thing to, you know, get additional community engagement, which seems to be what's taking place, especially around certain concerns for privacy and safety. I think the, the public benefits of the Park Line have been discussed and, and acknowledged, but really important, and, and it seems like council's doing a really nice job to, to try to move that forward and get additional, additional input around specific concerns for those residents that are, you know, most directly affected by it. One thing to note, and in particular on Henry Street especially, I've, I've talked to a number of residents there, and there are some newer families actually that have arrived, and maybe were not part of prior discussions. They've articulated, I think, some important things, and it'd be great to, you know, to, to bring those to bear in the coming weeks as well. So just wanted to make those quick comments, and thanks again for, for that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments? Okay, I'm going to declare public comment section closed. We're going to move on to council member comments and new business. Now's your chance. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to talk about the Parking Services Annual Permit Renewal Process. For Summit residents, the Parking Services Agency has announced the annual permit renewal for all Summit residents. Parents are, parents, permits are required by the City of Summit for residents to park in long-term municipal parking lots, as well as garages, and municipal, and also the use of the municipal transfer station. Resident, resident permits are $10 each. Senior permits, 62 and older, are $5 each. Current permits are valid through October 31st of this year. Residents are encouraged to renew their permits online We'll make sure that we put that on the, on the website. Step-by-step instructions are available in the Help section of the online portal and also have been emailed to all current permit holders. For more information or assistance with permit renewal, please contact Parking Services, Parking Services Agency at 908-522-5100 or email parking@cityofsummit.org. If you do require in-person renewal, there are appointments that can be made Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM to help assist if you're unable to do it online.
Thank you. Other council comments? Don't be shy, yes. Councilman Palowski.
Thank you. Just wanted to follow up on the Maple Street comment. So what's the question that we're, we're asking here, right? Is closing a street legal under New Jersey law? It depends on the street, and it depends on the circumstances. For whatever reason, everybody who is interested in outdoor dining seems to think the only way to have an enjoyable experience is to do so on Maple Street. I've said this at other council meetings, I've said this before I was on council. I've yet to hear how Maple Street fits the criteria necessary, in particular for safety and traffic flow, under New Jersey law. So, you know, we can keep talking about whether it's legal to close a street, which of course it is. But the question really is, is it legal to close Maple Street? And do the necessary criteria exist that our city engineer has to certify to with his, you know, stamp of approval, his, his, his professional seal, okay? In order to close Maple Street for more than 48, 48 hours? And, you know, a couple of meetings ago, or maybe it was the last meeting, I think Councilman Vartan said, "The only thing that we didn't do was send an ordinance to the state." That's just not true. Everybody likes to talk about Milburn. That's all Milburn did. No, that's not all Milburn did. Milburn's city engineer drafted a certification. It was in the form of a letter, but it was still a certification, laying out the criteria that are required under the New Jersey regulations in order to close the street for more than 48 hours. And that street that they closed was Main Street. Is Main Street closed anymore? No. Why? Because it was dangerous, okay? It's, it was, it's one of the main arteries in Milburn, just like Maple Street's one of the main arteries here in Summit. And they were getting complaints from people who worked at the, the hospitals that are there. And one person who had a heart attack was in an ambulance, trying to make his way to the hospital. And because it was impossible to navigate through the town, he had a second heart attack. Thankfully, he survived. But, you know, what, what kind of risk are we willing to take to close one of two streets that connect North and South Summit? Someone's going to have to articulate to me why it's legal. Why is it safe? And then we can weigh that against what we want. But I have yet to hear it. And supporters of closing Maple Street just say, "It's legal, it's legal, it's legal, it's legal." But tell me why. Tell me how it fits under the, under the statute and under the regulations. And then I would be, I would support considering it. That's it.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet.
I have one as well. Thank you, Council President. I won't bore you with all the details from the, I think it was the March 5th meeting. But Director Schreger was sitting there, and there's all sorts of items in the statute that you need to follow. And I basically said, "Fourth, the fourth item is the engineer's recommendation regarding the non-state highway closure is in the best interest of safety and the expedition of traffic on public highways." And I looked at him, I said, "Director Schreger, can you sign that or not?" And his answer was no. Our city engineer would not sign off. That is the bottom line. Would he potentially send it to a consulting engineer? Maybe. But he certainly wasn't going to put his city engineer stamp on it. So that, to me, says that it was not in the best interest of safety for the City of Summit. And I will tell you, I have pictures, and I can show them to you, of the amount of times that it's closed for either police or fire. And I think there are lots of different options for outdoor dining. I can probably name off five that we could potentially do. I just don't think this is the only one. I'm tired of talking about it. It's wasting a lot of time. I think there's a lot of other ideas. Maybe close a different street for a period of time. Maybe put tables on the Village Green. Rosie, you're probably going to tell me we can't do that. But I think we can get creative. I think there's other options. I, I like to outdoor dine, I think so do a lot of other people. But our city engineer wouldn't sign off for it, and I, that's, I trust that he couldn't do it. The last, the last comment I would make is regarding the Park Line. Spent a lot of time down there this weekend with residents from Henry Street. I actually, well, Bob almost fell on me trying to climb up the Park Line, which was a little, after he just blew out his last knee. So I was actually headed down the hill, and Bob was coming up after me, and I was thinking, "This is not a very good idea."
You have several puncture marks in there.
But I will tell you, it is very steep climb up, I think it's like Block 4207 or something. So we actually did get up there. And we've spent a lot of time with those residents talking about the very specifics of, to give you an example, the fence. Well, if the fence is down, if the, if the six-foot fence is down two feet, well, it's only a four-foot fence, right? It's not a six-foot fence. So we've spent a lot of time digging into the plans. We've spent a lot of time rehashing all the environmental studies that were done in 2020. Rosie has all the details of the amounts of time. You know, the one problem that I would say, and I think Greg, Greg and I have, I think we're in agreement on this, is that we, we really haven't had a Park Line Steering Committee in probably five years. So Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but. How long? It's been a while. This, right, a Steering Committee meeting. So what we'd like to do is engage the residents from down there again, make sure their concerns are heard. A lot of them did come to the meeting, and I think that the Park Line Committee is amenable to meeting some different screening requirements, and we're going to make sure that we hold them accountable to that. And I, I think that all of us, Jemel especially, we, we've spent a lot of time down there. And Greg, you live right there, so I think we, we all are going to do the right thing. And it's going to be really great for the city. It was approved by councils before us. So we're now implementing this, this Park Line. And, and we're looking forward to working with the residents. And really, I've been talking with them all day. Greg and I have been talking about it. So I think we're all, this is, this is a project that can bring Summit together. Thank you.
Thank you. And other comments? Councilman Vartan.
I'll add a few things on the Park Line. I'll talk about Maple, and then I do want to talk about parking permits, too. So, yeah, we're largely in agreement. The, the, taking us back a while here. The Park Line, there was a MOU that was created between the Park Line, it's a memorandum of agreement, not an understanding. So that was between the Park Line Foundation and the city. I don't want to say the year because I'm going to get it wrong. But basically, what it did was establish who's doing what, right? It established it as a city project, and it established the Park Line Foundation as the fundraising arm, right? So the responsibility for everything else, right? Everything else, including public engagement, the planning, the actual implementation, going out to bid, doing all that stuff is the responsibility of the city. So that's when council at the time thought it was a good idea. Let's put together this Park Line Steering Committee that would then facilitate those conversations that are important with the community. And, you know, those, those, that, you know, there was a pandemic in the middle of all of it, right? And, and so the, the, now that we're ready, again, or close to being ready to, again, to go into the next phase, that's, now we need to bring back that Steering Committee that includes residents in the area and have these conversations. So I thought that was important to just flesh out a little bit. Maple Street, again, I think continues. People in the community, people here on the dais, are equating outdoor dining with Maple Street closure. And it's really not the same thing. We have opportunities, as many people have pointed out. We have opportunities for outdoor dining all over the place, all over town, right? It's not just about sitting outside at a restaurant. It was about creating a destination in Summit. And that is, for three years, what happened. And, you know, I think I'll, I'll just add a couple of things. First is, when we say, "Was Maple Street closed illegally?" No, it absolutely was not. We've had this conversation many times in here before. When we talk about moving forward, there are many legal ways to go about doing this so that we can create that space, not just for restaurants, but for the enjoyment of people to come to this city, to walk around town safely. And also, we should approach this conversation not in a way that is about fear, right? You're, you're not a doctor. You don't know that he had a second heart attack because he was in the ambulance for too long, right? Was that an, that was not a medical report that was available to people, right? And we had, we had a fire, a three-alarm fire at the Elks while the street was closed. And everything was moved out of the way in two seconds. The fire department had easy access. The fire was knocked down in, in a very short period of time. So I think we can, to the point of people that have come tonight, we can have logical discussions and disagreements about this, but it doesn't have to be based on, "This is illegal," or "This is going to kill people." It has to be based on whether it's a good idea for the city. And I'll, I, I want to talk about parking permits for just a second. So there's two thoughts I have. One is that the schedule for this is all wrong. And I've had this, I've had this argument every single year with, with, I, various people, right? This is such a weird time of year to say, "We're having a renewal," right? Like, it's not the end of the year. It's not the middle of the year. It's not a fiscal year end. It's just kind of an arbitrary date that was picked a very long time ago because I think it was convenient for the people that worked in the Parking Services Agency, right? So I would really hope that someday we could get this on an actual calendar renewal schedule when you're thinking about renewing subscriptions and doing all these things that you do, right? Like, this is such a, anyway, I made my point there. It raises, though, the, the second thing, which is, you know, I'm coming to the end of my time here on council, and it seems to me that a big, big thing that we're missing and a huge opportunity for us to work on together is a single sign-on system for this city. To sign on, pay your taxes, get your parking permit, get your permit for the pool, get your golf pass, right? All of that should be on a single sign-on. They did it in New York City in 2012. They have a few more staff people than we do. But the point is, you know, we, we should try to, we should try to work on that. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Thank you, Council President. I told my wife I was trying hard not to say anything. I, I was trying. Yeah, I, I went up to the Park Line, too. I've been up there several times. Phone conversations, text messages, emails. And, you know, I seen the situation at hand first. I didn't fall up the hill, though. I got up there pretty good. But, you know, what I heard was concerns about safety, concerns about upkeep, infrastructure issues, environmental impacts, and privacy. One resident was worried about damage to his retaining wall. And, you know, standing up on the Park Line, I gained a deeper understanding of, you know, of those worries. And, you know, it's definitely clear we need to take our, our time, not too much time, but we need to take some time to, to figure this out. You know, at the same time, though, I want to acknowledge the tremendous work that former Councilman Dr. Rubino put into this project. And I know it's not just Dr. Rubino. I know it's a group of people, but I want to point that out. The Park Line does have the potential to be our first new park in over 90 years. I hope I got that right. And it would be an incredible achievement. And it has the power to enhance our community. But as we move forward, we must balance this with a commitment to addressing legitimate concerns of the residents on Henry Street and Russell Place. And I think Mr. Gunderson said it best. Some may have missed earlier updates. You know, there's new neighbors that moved in. And this pause gives us a chance to ensure that everyone is informed and the Park Line Commission does right by the community. But I also want to point out that this is, this is no time for political gamesmanship, though, right? Let's not make this a, a political thing. Let's, as a council, let's just do what's right. Let's go down there and actually, I don't, we've already been down there, right? I think we need to take it a step further. I think we need to sit down with our, our engineer. I think we need to show them the plans, the updated plans. And that's, it may be out there or not, but we need to show them what we're actually doing. The environmental studies. I don't think these folks are to the point where they want to say, "Well, let's not do this at all," right? But they want to be reassured that whatever we do is consistent with what we've been telling them for. with what we've been telling them for years. So I'll leave it at that. I think we can do really right by them. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments?
I just have a quick one. Tom, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm looking at our bill list, and something was bothering me today. So I think we pay about $3,500 a month for animal control. Is that right, Rosie? Animal control?
Animal control.
Is it? Anybody know? I think it's like $3,500. But anyway, today on the bill list, I noticed that we had $1,600 in regards to, I guess we're testing for a lot of rabies. We're also... We charge a fee if we find a cat, and they hold a cat. So there's a bill on here for $280. So I just was wondering if you could look at this and provide some suggestions on whether or not we're in the right contract or not? Because it seems like we're paying à la carte for animal control.
You have to understand, feral cats are an issue in every community, and they are normally outside the scope of your animal control. So that's why you're seeing that. But I can do a little background check and give the governing body a report as to exactly what those charges are. This way, everybody's a little more educated.
So it sounds pretty normal that the cats aren't included?
It does. That's why you see cat, cat, cat.
Right. Okay.
If I can opine for a second, right? So I'm on the Health Committee. This goes out to bid. We get someone to handle certain things for us, right? And actually, at the last report, there was only one, I'll say, one contractor that would take care of these services for us in the county here. The problem is that when you report a missing cat, or a raccoon, or something like that, you know, and they have to be put down, or things of that nature, it is a process, and not anyone can do that. So I do think the contract is coming up again, and we'll be looking into it. But just so everyone knows, this is not a process that there's a lot of individuals that can do this. It's a very slim group of people that do this work, so.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, I'll just close with a couple of my own. I do know, we used to have a City of Summit, like, dog catcher a long time ago.
It's my fault.
Yeah.
When I was on Board of Health, we wanted to share it, too.
Exactly. So we did do this outside contractor thing, and it just made sense at the time. But I do know it's probably a growth business if someone wanted to get into it. In any event, just two comments, just to respond. I think Mr. Tucci did touch on our process for finding the city administrator. And rest assured, everyone in council will have a say in picking the new city administrator. Our department heads will have a say in picking the new city administrator. Stakeholders, those are the stakeholders that deal with them. I mean, this is... And so rest assured, it will be an inclusive process. Everyone will have a voice, and we're going to pick a very good city administrator. I have no doubt. Secondly, just to pile on around the Park Line, I think two things can be true at once. One is, the Park Line is a wonderful, I think, amenity for Summit when it'll be finished. It's not just a park. It is a connection between neighborhoods. It allows children to ride unimpeded without worrying about, you know, Morris and Glenwood Avenue. I mean, this is really dangerous stuff. This is a great, great vision for something new for Summit, and I really do look forward to it being completed someday. But the other thing that can be true is that as we implement an already-approved project, as people have alluded to up here, we can do better at implementing it, and we can do better at listening to the community around their concerns and their questions. And I think it's an excellent idea that what we should do with this Steering Committee, we should call it, and what I would ask them to do is to systematize a process of rolling out new phases, where there is a process for community engagement, there's a process for feedback, incorporating comments, suggestions on, "I don't want arborvitae, I want a fence," whatever it is, to do that. And so we can do both. We can have a great project. We can have a project that the community really gets behind, and then, in addition, they can find it, it's not an eyesore, it's something that they love to have in their neighborhood. And so I think we can do both, and I'm sure we will. So we'll move on that ASAP. Okay? Yes?
Sorry. I don't mean to make this meeting any longer than it needs to be, but there's two things I wanted to point out. The first gentleman that spoke in public comments, I really, it's bothering me. And it... Things like that shouldn't happen if he's being treated differently than someone else who does have an address and pays taxes. And unfortunately, he left. But I think that's something maybe the mayor's homelessness task force can look into to make sure that that is not happening. And it's... I don't know why, it's really been bothering. So I hope that we can get to the bottom of that, and hopefully, we can... Your task force will do what is mission to do and go zero homelessness in Summit. So the next thing I wanted to mention is, I think this is maybe the first meeting we've been finished with less than, under two hours. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for stepping up. And I know you've done this twice, and this has been a great meeting. And thank you very much for becoming our council president and your leadership.
Thank you. All right, if there are no further comments, do I have a motion to adjourn? So... Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.